Charles.
Christian.
I. What's that? I. You two.
Gary Terry.
Little question.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Start before the season.
Okay, you ready to go?
No.
Yeah.
Well, YouTube's not.
Watch out, watch out.
Well, how long she thinks it'll take you six? Ready, man? All righty. I call the Smith County Board of Supervisors meeting in order. And the first item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance invocation. A pledge of allegiance to be led by Heather Gillespie. Excuse me, Heather Strick. Sorry. Going back to maiden name still. And Lance Turner will do the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Turner here. Would you mind going at Heather?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you tonight as citizens of Smith County. Just be with us, lead, guide, and direct the hands of the board and let their will be pleasing to you, God. Give us travel mercies to get safely home and lead us back here again tomorrow to do your work and your service. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bill Henn. In case you wonder why I didn't do that, we on the board can't lead the invocation. That way we're not sanctioning anyone's allegiance. So, as much as I'd like to, I know we can't. Thank you, Heather. We have an amendment to the agenda that I think we need to entertain a motion for. Yes. If I can find it. Uh, here we go. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose amendment to the agenda. Schedule a public hearing. The Smith County Board of Supervisors will need to schedule a public hearing for Thursday, February 24th at 7:00 PM or sooner soon thereafter to solicit public input on a local community development in relation to community development block grant funding for the Carville Town Waterline Replacement Project. As a reminder, this project will replace an aging system that is nearly seventy years old with immense water loss occurring consistently. County is the only applicant for this grant and the town of Sal will be responsible for any local match requirements. Please review and vote on it. Offer committee recommendations, see meeting minutes provided. Is that two different minutes?
Yeah.
I'd like to propose those two additions to the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Believe it, perhaps we'll add that to the agenda. And I'm going, now that we've got the agenda set, I'm going to go out of order. And I'm going to start with the public hearing because we have nice to see a lot of people here. And rather you sit, and rather than making you sit here and go through all the paperwork, we're going to jump right into the public hearings. So, the first public hearing is the Public Nuisance Declaration for 243 Quail Run Sugar Grove. Clay, are you going?
Yes, sir.
Update everybody, I'll turn the floor over to.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, first public hearing we have tonight is to consider 243 Quail Run Road. This is located in the Camp Community. Most of you probably recall that this has been an ongoing issue. It's been going on actually for several years. We've been trying to get it taken care of as a zoning violation. But ultimately, we weren't able to get any response from the owners. And so after a conversation with Scott, it was decided that it would be best to go ahead and consider the second ordinance that regulates this, and that's the nuisance ordinance. And so we set up this public hearing. Unable to get in touch with the owners, we sent, or we put an ad in the paper in Smith County News for two weeks. We sent registered certified mailing and first-class mailing to the owners. And then we also posted the property. So, we tried every way possible to get word to the owners of the property that this property was going to be considered a public nuisance. When we posted the property, we've got some pictures on the back here. We were able to get some up-to-date pictures of the state of the property right now. And so basically, we're here tonight for you all to hear from the neighbors. There are several neighbors here tonight that I'm sure want to address you. One came with seventeen letters, which I think have been distributed to you all. She's willing to read all those into the public record if you would like, but if you're content with copies, then those have been distributed. And then the owner of the property, or at least one of the owners of the property, I spoke with very briefly before. He is here tonight and I'm sure he may want to address you as well.
Okay, I guess we got two orders of business. Do we need to read the, get someone to read the? Or?
This is the second one. They may have signed it wrong, obviously, you may remember. Read both names.
Public hearing notice, yes. Section 5.2 of the Smith County Board of Supervisors adopted rules and procedures for public hearings. In instances where persons address the board through the chairperson without having first been allotted a specific time on the agenda, they shall limit their remarks as follows, except in extraordinary circumstances. Person speaking for him or herself or his or her immediate neighborhood, three minutes. Person speaking for an organization whose membership is representative of the entire district, five minutes. A person speaking for an organization whose membership is representative of the entire county, ten minutes. Unless approved by a majority vote of the board, no action shall be taken by the board following a public hearing and the issue shall be continued until the next regular meeting.
All right, can you read the publications for the Quail Run?
I'll do that. Before the Smith County Board of Supervisors, the Smith County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing in the Smith County Office Building, 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia on Thursday, February 10th, 2022 at 5:00 PM or soon thereafter to receive public input on whether the properties referenced below constitutes a public nuisance as defined by the Smith County Code, Article 3, Section 20-64. First property being 243 Quail Run Sugar Grove identified as tax map number 74A-2-19 and 74A-2-20. And the second property being the one formerly addressed as 500 Riverside Road, Shell Howie identified as tax map number 65C-1-2. Publication is required in cases where the property owner is unknown or the county has been unable to locate the owner. Those with an ownership interest in the property should contact Clay Williams at 276-706-8315. Should the property be declared a public nuisance and the owners, owner, owners do not file a plan to abate or raise the nuisance at his or her cost, the county will file a complaint with the circuit court and take action to remove the nuisance. The cost will be charged to the owner and is a, as a lien against the property ranking on parity with real estate taxes. Feather to pay nuisance abatement charges may result in the property being sold for nuisance abatement costs as well as delinquent real estate taxes pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 58.1-3965, 1950 as amended. At this public hearing subject to the rules and procedure of the Board of Supervisors of Smith County, Virginia, any person may appear and state his or her views their own in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact Clay Williams, ADA Coordinator, at 276-706-8315 at least forty-eight hours prior to the hearing. Done by order of the Board of Supervisors, Sean, Uth County Minister.
All righty, and we've had for the, for the Quail Run, we've had two people sign up. Diane. Diane Grant, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Diane S. Grant. My physical residence is 3624 Wilmont Avenue Northwest, Roanoke, Virginia, 24017. I served as treasurer and registered agent since 2001 and have worked with Clay Williams, Darlene Neach, and Lori Deal during this period. We currently have three hundred and nineteen lots and two hundred and fourteen owners, I should say taxpayers. And most are in good standing. And now if you'll notice, this area and onto the side is National, bounds National Forest. About a quarter of a mile this way is With County Line. About a quarter mile this way is Carmi Baptist Church. And this is Hale Lake Road that goes right up through the middle. And our property is all that's shown here. And she's going to give you a smaller map that has marked the place that's, the two places, lots that we're considering and other pictures that are appropriate. During the last four years, we have worked with Lori and Clay to try to solve the problem that continues to escalate, that of discarded used tires being dumped on two lots in our community, 243 Quail Run Road, lots nineteen and twenty. We are less than one mile from the Virginia Horse Trail and the National Forest and less than five miles from the, from Hales Lake and Comer's Rock. And we together have a problem that's a threat to these beautiful recreational areas for so many people, a lot of people besides the ones that are in our community. The owner of record is Kathy Vanover Ray Tuggle, who died on 4/26/19. And her son Shay Ray is one of the three current owners. He has been living there off and on in the mobile home without power and water and electricity and has been paid for load after load of used tires from unknown sources. We've tried to find out and we can't find them. And being paid to dispose of the tires, which he hasn't been doing properly. They've created a blight on our community, a safety and health concern. Over five hundred tires have been shown in the photos that y'all made and ones we have as well. And I probably have fifty or more photos, but I figured you'd get the idea, you didn't need too many more. Lori's been there, Clay's been there, DEQ has been there, and EPA has been there. And we appreciate all these efforts, but it's time for action. Something needs to be done. Water inside the tires is drawing mosquitoes, rats, snakes, mice, and other critters. Harvey Creek just over the hill is in danger of becoming polluted. These tires are all over the 1.47 acres of these two lots stacked up piles everywhere and just tossed all over the ground. The owner refuses to do anything about the matter. If there was a fire, all of our three hundred and nineteen lots would be in jeopardy. Plus all the people who reside in the community or anywhere near this mess. It could endanger the Virginia Horse Trail, the National Forest, Hales Lake, and all the properties on the backside of Virginia's tallest mountain, Mount Rogers. The acrid smell from the burning rubber could endanger the many elderly people, residents, who live nearby. This mess is driving down property values in the area, which directly affects Smith County and its residents, losing possible tax revenue, revenue you need to run our county. Saddle Brook Farms works hard to be good citizens, but this situation affects much more than just a few people living in our community. It could have a significant impact on the whole county. Please help us get this environmental threat removed now, before it becomes any worse. I'm sure all of you are aware of the problems Bristol, Tennessee is having with the EPA and the DEQ due to issues at the Bristol, Virginia landfill. We don't want to become national news that way, not a good way. Please address this issue tonight or as soon as you meet again. And let's get started improving the environmental impact made by the pile of five hundred-plus tires on Quail Run Road. And now I brought with you seventeen, with me seventeen letters from residents who are taxpayers. And I think if, as you read through those, you will see that there are a lot of them that are very concerned about these health issues because of all of the debris, but especially the tires. Do you, would you like to keep the pictures or shall I take them back with me?
Go ahead and take them back with you, we've got the ones that Clay has taken.
Do you have any questions for us from the Property Owners Association?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Go ahead, Chris.
Ma'am, did I, did I hear you say this has been ongoing for roughly four years?
It's been every bit of that. And now we, we had a similar problem about, what, ten years ago maybe? And Smith County was wonderful. You took, you helped us with that.
So, is this a repeat of the?
Yes, sir. This is a repeat.
And just to clarify, I thought I heard you say that there's someone inhabiting this property?
Off and on.
Off and on? Is it, does it have electricity run to it or is it?
It has, and at times it hasn't.
Okay.
At one time, there were children there, but they are no longer there. Or I don't think they are.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment. I appreciate you coming tonight. I know we've talked about this several times.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I've said 243 Quail Run is probably more than anybody wants to hear. I serve on local government, so I can say how frustrating it is for the government process.
Yes.
Clean it up. So, I don't care what we have to do tonight, this is ridiculous and it's gone on for far too long. And I just personally want to apologize to the citizens who live here, because you're all my constituents. I apologize that it's taking so long.
Well, it really affects more than just the ones that are our property owners. I mean, it's, it's going to affect ours much sooner than it would the rest of them. But if we're, a lot of the residents are concerned, the owners, taxpayers are concerned about the possibility of fire and the diseases that it's already causing. The mosquitoes have been a real problem this past summer. And that's addressed in part of the letters. A couple or three of the letters address the problem with mosquitoes.
And just for the record, so this will be in a minute, I'm very disappointed and frustrated with DEQ that they keep passing it off to us.
Well, we, we started with the county and I've talked with Clay several times and he, I appreciate it and Lori. It's been very helpful to have their support, but we've talked to DEQ and EPA also. And they've been out there and they won't do a thing.
Right. Looking at it, it's not going to make it go away.
Exactly.
So, and just to clarify for you, Mr. Atlas, this is a situation that was voted on as a public nuisance back in twenty? Clay, was it eighteen or nineteen?
Well, ten years ago, like she said initially. And then this round started two or three years ago. So, yeah, we've.
Once it was declared the public nuisance steps weren't followed through to continue, then when we brought it up again, Mr. Fregman had to go through a different process and track down the owners. And then now this is the next step of something.
Well, and one of the, one of the owners died.
Right. So, that's why it's taking so long.
Thank you again, I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you. Randy Williams.
That's me. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association of America, but Diane has pretty much said everything that needs to be said on this issue. It's just gotten way out of hand and I would have to say, Mr. Williams over here deserves a raise for his hard work. But if there is anything you all could do, we would appreciate it. It's an eyesore, a rodent problem, and the stream at the bottom of the hill. But that's, I'll, I'll sit down and let you all go on, but we do appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the, on the Quail Run? Come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Shay Ray. I live at 243.
Come forward if you don't mind.
Tire problem, yeah, it happened when I was incarcerated. There's some boys coming around and dumping a bunch of tires, yeah. It is an eyesore, I don't like it either. I've been slowly chiseling it, getting rid of them. Few here, few there, getting them away. It costs seven fifty a piece to get rid of them at the damn landfill. I'm a broke boy, I'm trying. I don't have license or a truck or a trailer, but I'm trying to get rid of that mess. I've done got rid of all the scrap metal, got that cleaned up, give it away to haul it out. Working on it slowly. I am a avid outdoorism, I do not like it being near the woods. Y'all give me some time, I will get it cleaned up. I just recently took over the property.
Any questions? How, by recently, what, how long were you talking about?
I'm going to try to get it before spring, before the snakes get in there.
All righty. Anyone else wishing to speak? Last chance to comment. I closed the hearing on Quail Run. Now we have a hearing on the, we don't know, we got it, on the 500 Riverside Road. I didn't see the public advertisement on that.
We advertised those together, in the same advertisement.
Oh, okay, I see it now.
Yeah, they were included in the same ad to the paper. So, this is a similar situation in the sense that this has been ongoing. Actually, had a long history with this property as well. It started with a burned-out home. We were able to eventually get that cleaned up through the nuisance ordinance. And then most recently, there have been some RVs moved in and some folks went in there without power, without any means of sewage disposal. And that brought the nuisance complaint. Like the previous case, we started out trying to handle it as a zoning violation. And like the sim, or the previous case, we had no luck in finding the owner. So, same conversation Scott and I had was, well, let's run it down the nuisance ordinance path because that gives us some, some better avenues as far as notifying the owners. And so we, we started down that path as far as putting that in the paper, posting the property, sending another round of certified and first-class mailings to the owner. But then luckily, Scott was successful in getting her served with the original round of notes or zoning violations. So, this is just another effort to bring this property into compliance. So, asking that it be declared a public nuisance as well. And I don't know if anybody's here for Riverside.
We've got three to sign up.
Okay. Very good.
All right, we've had three to wish to comment. Anne Marie Coger, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Anne Marie Coger and my address is 484 Riverside Road, Charlotte, Virginia. This has been an ongoing problem since we have lived there. We've lived there for two and a half years now. Reva Presley-Boss is the owner of the property. Her and her son lived there for approximately six months with no running water, no electricity, no bathroom. They would use the bathroom wherever it fit them to use the bathroom. They tried breaking in the house. I've been threatened to have my throat slit. They busted a camper windows out. They would leave, another set moved in. They would get in front of your house, two, three o'clock in the morning cussing. They had another group move in in a tent. The last group that was there, there was at least six or seven of them. No bathroom whatsoever. They would go outside, burn it on a fire, throw it in the river. They throw oil in the river. They throw tires in the river, which is still there. I've called EPA, I've called the game warden, I've called everybody that I know to get in touch with. No one seems to want to handle the situation because they say they can't find Reva Presley-Boss. I know her and I mean, I'm just going to state the fact, she has a rap sheet as long as my arm. This situation is out of control and it needs someone to address the situation. I mean, you can't sleep. It's like an interstate, cars in and out in hours of the night. They do what they please. The last group that was there, the law had to be called because the girl threatened me. The law came, didn't do anything to her. I thought they said I was on her property, which that is not her property to start with. They was just residing there. And it also says that it's a recreational spot. It's not supposed to be used as a permanent residence. This has been used as a permanent residence for right at two and a half years. And as soon as warm weather comes, there's going to be another group move in. Everybody in the neighborhood's sick of it. A lot of people wouldn't come because they don't want their name out there. But if I've got to live there with security sticks under my doors and put a security system up and can't sit outside in my own home, that's pathetic. I mean, if I was doing it and I was using the bathroom, I mean, they'll just stand up, use the bathroom right directly in front of me. They'll even ask you if you want to see it. To me, that's a disgrace. There's kids in the area. This group here that's here, they couldn't let their kids outside because they told them to come over and get some candy. They would lure them over to the camper. And I mean, there's nothing in the camper, it's just a shelf. It's called my, our house, I'm, I'm very clean. And you know, if a person chooses to live that way, my mama always taught me, you have respect and decency for others. If that's how you choose to live, you be decent about yourself. But that's a trout-stocked area. They go out, they dump oil, they dump their ashes, their sewage, whatever they want to. I have ducks. They was shooting my ducks with a BB gun. I called the game warden. Game warden said there wasn't nothing that he could do because he didn't catch them in the act. My windshield has been broken out of my car. Two of my tires have been flat. They was on the property, second week of January, I called the law. The law told me there wasn't anything they could do because they didn't catch them on the property. That my security footage goes against their privacy. I don't see how that is pertaining to that situation. Because if I go in Walmart, they have a security system. When I walk through that door, they have me on there. If I shoplift, they were, they look at the footage. So, I think if a person has to pay for a security system, then they should have to look at the security system. I've had to take out a protective order because one told me he was going to slice my throat at 2:30 in the morning. This gentleman went with me to Abingdon to take out the protective order. And if something doesn't get done out there, someone's seriously going to get injured. I'm not saying I'm going to do anything, but you can't put your head down on your pillow at nighttime because of the constant in and out, in and out. They come last night, they ripped the sign off. They come back at 3:15 this morning and put it back up there. Reva Presley-Boss was on the property at 4:30 this afternoon. Why she's not here, I can't tell you. But I mean, nobody should have to live in these conditions. I mean, you're going to get something, I mean, you can't eat the trout. The fishermen can't even come and fish because of the stench. I mean, they would take a five-gallon bucket of sewage and dump it on the fire pit and burn it. Anybody with any common sense wouldn't do that. So, I'm asking for somebody's help. I've done everything I know to do, been everywhere I know to go, called everyone. I've done everything I know to do, been everywhere I know to go, called everybody I need to call. And it needs to be addressed. So I would appreciate if any of y'all could help me. That would be wonderful.
Ms. Coger, I'm sorry that you and I have talked on the phone many times.
Yes, we have.
You and I talk almost daily sometimes.
Yes.
And I'm sorry that you all have had to do this and like I said, uh, I, this needs to be fixed as quick as we possibly, within our powers, we can do.
Yes.
I'm sorry, like I said, that y'all have had to do this. And like I said, we've done every, uh, we keep pressing forward to get it taken care of as quick as possible, okay?
Well, any help would be greatly appreciated because I know everybody in the neighborhood, I mean, like I said, if they would have stepped up and come, you know, maybe the more people we had, I don't know, maybe would have got it done faster. But you know, the ones that are here, I mean, they can tell you the exact same thing that I told you. I mean, it's just, it's just gut-wrenching, just to be honest.
I appreciate y'all being here tonight.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
You mentioned the trailer was, was just a shell.
Yes, yes.
I mean, is it fixed again or?
The last couple, not the last couple that lived there, but the gentleman and his girlfriend that lived there before, they got mad and left. They kind of completely gutted. There's no cabinets, there's no seats, there's no nothing. And he took lime and dusted the inside of the camper, around the yard. Right now, there's three, three bags of trash, this high piled up in front of the camper, a potty chair. I mean, it's just plain out disgusting. And the last couple that lived there, there was a sixty-one year old woman that supposedly had a broken leg. And when you walk in camper, it's just the floor. The termites has eaten the shell completely out of it. There's no, there's no floor in the camper. So I mean, you know, these people just keep coming in and going out, coming in and going out. I'm not blind. I know what they're doing. So I mean, you know.
So, so it's, just to be clear, it, it has no permanent foundation. It is, it is set up as a pull-in for the weekend camper and then pull it back out. But they're not doing the pulling it out. It's just set there permanently.
No, someone like I said, Reva and her son Mitchell, they moved it, they moved it out there. They stayed maybe six, seven months. He busted all the windows out, blood everywhere. Cussing, hitting the trees, coming at you, hollering for you to come out of the house. They left. A boy and his girlfriend moved in. And then two girls moved in. And then this last bunch was either six or seven people that moved in. And as soon as warm weather hits, somebody's gonna move back in.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, this may be geared more towards Mr. Williams. The address of five hundred Riverside Road, that, was, was the camper actually issued an address through the county?
Uh, the previous house that burned, um, was addressed as five hundred. And, and once that house was, was removed, demolished, then the address effectively was vacated. So the RVs have never been, never been addressed. Now, Reva did come in and she applied for a building permit because she tried to get electricity to the lock. And I would not issue that permit without approval from the health department. And she never got that approval, so I never issued the permit for the electrical. So that's, and I, I'll show you the picture in just a minute. But we actually posted notice at tonight's hearing on that electrical pole. But yeah.
And, and there is no electricity?
No.
There is no electricity on the property. There is no approved septic system. And the, the reference to the five hundred is to the previous one that was there many years ago.
They have a pole with the, the outline of the box, the silver box that you put before AEP puts it in there. And she says that they're gonna give her power and they're gonna build her a house. I think it's Habitat of Humanity is gonna build her a house on stilts to vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So she started out trying to get power. But again, without health department approval, I wouldn't issue the electrical permit. And so when we posted notice at tonight's hearing, we put it on the electrical pole.
Tiffany Waddell.
Uh, she mainly said everything.
Name and address, please.
Tiffany Waddell, I did live at five oh three Riverside Road. We were forced to move out due to them trying to coast in our kids, shaking their junk at my mother. And everything. It was, it was just disgusting. You couldn't do anything. Kids couldn't get out to play, nothing.
Any questions?
Thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate you all coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Chris Davidson.
I'm with her.
You wanna come to the dress?
They addressed it all.
Alrighty.
Thank you for being here.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this subject? You have anything more to say?
Uh, I think it'd be good if, if Mr. Williams explains that, gives a quick summary of what is, are the next steps.
I was gonna ask you to do that for both of you.
So at this point, uh, all public comment has been taken. It's into the record. So the board will close the public hearing and then typically, as Lisa read in the rules of the public hearing, they will not vote on this until their next meeting. Not putting any pressure on them, but occasionally they will suspend their rules. And they will vote on it here tonight. So we'll see what happens, alright? If they, whenever they vote on it, whether that's here in just a few minutes or at the next meeting, if it's declared a public nuisance, then the county attorney and I will work to basically get those folks in court and get a court order allowing us to go on the property and clean it up.
Alrighty. If nobody else wishes to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Can I ask one more question? Real quick. If the property is like, you know, that they do come in and they clean it up and everything, will the property be allowed to be sold to someone else or how does that work?
So typically, and Scott can jump in here if I, if I say something wrong. But typically, if the, the cost of the cleanup and any taxes that are owed, if, if those combined exceed fifty percent of the value of the property, then typically we will ask the judge for control of the property. And then we will settle on the courthouse steps. If it is less than that, then what we do is we put a lien on the property.
Thank you.
Alrighty, what's the pleasure of the board now? Do we move on or do I have some?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and go ahead and vote on this issue tonight.
Just, both issues or just one?
Both.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise. Sounds like I heard five ayes. Alrighty. I'm open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and declare both properties, two forty-three Quail Run and five hundred Riverside Road, as public nuisance.
Probably need to do each one separately, just in case, don't we?
Uh, you can do them together, I think. I would ask you add to the motion to authorize the county attorney to prosecute or pursue those violations or enforcing those violations.
That's my motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of declaring both of these properties a nuisance with the attorney being able to follow up as directed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed likewise. Sounds like that was unanimous. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Let's pause for a second while they.
Some of those properties are gonna be declared a public nuisance, so I'll be working with the county attorney to get them, uh, to court. So Riverside, hang in there. Hopefully we'll get there straight. If you truly intend to clean it up, do it quick.
Don't worry about it.
I know.
It already looks, we presented those in the beginning, thanks.
Oh, no problem.
Now going back to our agenda and the order it's in, we have some special recognition presentations and I, uh, I appreciate everyone having the patience to sit here through that. We wanted to get that out of the way. Lincoln Theater status report. Tracy Thompson.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and do a quick update about the Health and Lincoln Theater. I have just a couple little handouts. It just gives just a little bit, um, is it okay that I, I feel like I'm kinda like a court. May I approach it a bit? Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is not the same one you cashed on.
Okay.
Yours is normal.
Okay.
So my name is Tracy Thompson. I am the current executive director for the Lincoln Theater. I, um, became the director in August of twenty twenty when our existing director resigned unexpectedly. But as we all know, with COVID being a full force in twenty twenty, it's really difficult to be the director of an event venue that has no events. And so I just was on, I've been on the board of directors for the Lincoln Theater off and on since nineteen ninety-one. And I just stepped in and I've really enjoyed it. I'm not a public speaker. I'm not a performer, but I am a businessperson. So I'm really treating the Lincoln Theater more as a business. And the one thing that I'm really excited about, we did, with venues being shuttered because of COVID, there was money available, but you had to go after that money. And you had to give a good case and have good records to be able to receive the funding. And we fortunately were very successful in receiving funding through, funding through the shuttered venue operating grant program, through, um, small business administration, all different funding sources. And I'm proud to say that for the first time since we reopened in two thousand and four, we are debt-free. We owe no one, which is, I think, pretty impressive. Especially coming out of COVID. We were very, very cautious with our spending in twenty twenty-one. And I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous because I'm, you know, you guys are a little intimidating, y'all sitting there. And I'm not a performer. We had great events in twenty twenty-one and even though we weren't at full capacity until June of twenty twenty-one, we did a great job. We brought in a little over seven thousand patrons into Smith County. And that's pretty good. Our biggest year before that was in twenty nineteen and that year we brought in around twelve thousand patrons. So we weren't that far off the mark. I have a really exciting twenty twenty-two calendar already pretty much full. It might seem a little girl-heavy, but I have Lori Morgan, who's a big Lori Morgan fan. Fabulous. She is coming August twentieth. Rhonda Vincent came to our theater in November of twenty twenty-one. And she typically does a Christmas show only in Branson, Missouri, at two different theaters that she performs at. For the first time, she's gonna bring that Christmas show on tour. And guess who her management company called first? The Lincoln Theater. So we are, December tenth, we are the first scheduled Christmas show. So I think that's really impressive that they, Rhonda Vincent and the Rage, big performers, are really enjoying Smith County. They're enjoying the Lincoln Theater. They're enjoying the patrons. And that's a testament to the support they're receiving from everyone, including the board of supervisors. So in twenty twenty-two, we are also re-examining some of our existing programs. One being, we've always had the Missoula Children's Theater, which is out of Missoula, Montana, Montana. They come once a year, one week. They've been doing it for probably around fifteen years. It costs the theater five thousand dollars. So that's five thousand dollars that is going out of the county. But we do offer that one week of theatrical experience free to our children. So this year, we're doing it in-house. So we're gonna employ locals to run the theater camp. We have professionals that, um, have theater degrees that will be running it. We have a new performing arts company, the Lincoln Theater Performing Arts Company, is gonna be handling that as well as some other adult theater. So we're gonna expand it two weeks free for community children that are ages six to eighteen, as long as they're still in school or entering school in the twenty twenty-two fall. And I think that's really exciting that we're gonna start doing things more in-house. So we're gonna keep the jobs local and we're gonna make sure that we are attracted to our teenagers and our twenty-somethings to come back, that there's things for them to do employment-wise in the arts in Smith County. Um, I, in the little packet, I also have what I call, I've learned in the trade, a one-sheet. And so this is what I do every three weeks. It, it becomes pretty current and it highlights, you know, a couple of upcoming events. And we're doing this in lieu of a program. Because a program, typically we would print a program, it would be current for six months. But in COVID, we're always changing. We have to be really fluid, very flexible with our programming, so I'm doing this instead. And it's been really successful. And I have an expanded version of this. I do an e-newsletter. We built up our e-newsletter email base to five thousand patrons all over the country, which I think is really exciting because we are bringing in people from outside of the region. So all, like in your handout as well, in the little booklet, I just did a couple of highlights. But I think this is really important that I did an analysis of all the patrons that purchased tickets. So that's the disclaimer. I can track zip codes if you purchase tickets and they love, like a free event, like when we have a Memorial Day celebration that's open to everyone. I don't really know where you came from, but for ticketed events, we had just seventy-four point five percent of the patrons that purchased tickets came from zip codes outside of our county. So we are bringing in tourists, we're bringing in, um, dollars being spent for accommodations, restaurants, shops. And it's, I think it's pretty impressive and I'm really proud of that. Sean has, I did a bigger booklet for him for our allocation request for the fiscal year twenty-three. For our twenty twenty-two scheduled events, I did a forecast of how many patrons, fingers crossed, we will attract for the events we already have on our calendar. And it should be, fingers crossed, right around nineteen thousand. Because we are, every event, we're growing. Some of the mountains, their demographics is a little bit older and those are the patrons that aren't coming out as much. But slowly, the numbers are growing again, which is fabulous. We're thrilled that they're on our stage one night a month. And also, we're expanding into another realm of programming, which is film. And thank you for supporting our film ARC request last year. I did, I resubmitted it again this year with a little bit of modification. But one thing that we're gonna do, this is kind of a, actually, I just worked it out today. So who is a big motorcycle rider? No one? No one? Well, um, Back of the Dragon is really a great asset to our region and it's perfect that I consider we are the beginning of Back of the Dragon instead of the end. But we haven't capitalized on that as much as I think we could and we will. So there is a movie called On Any Sunday. It's a big motorcycle movie. Who, do you know that movie, Sean? It's a classic. This is its fiftieth anniversary. So I am partnering with the distributor for that film and also with Back of the Dragon and we'll do a showing at the Lincoln Theater. So think of just getting motorcycle money. Motorcycle riders have a lot of money and they love to spend their money. To get that group kind of isolated in Marion, get them exposed to Marion, and they'll start coming back over and over and over again. We're also doing great partnering with Emery and Henry. They have a diversity program at, on their campus and we are gonna be their venue. So all the Emery and Henry programming, that is maybe just more about diversity, inclusion, things of that nature will happen at the Lincoln Theater. So we're, we have been partnering nicely with the School of Health Sciences, but now we're gonna partner with the main campus as well. So I'm excited about that. We're working with Dirk, um, from Emery and Henry. He and I are developing a wine and film festival. There'll be a regional film festival and float around to bring people from other counties into Smith County and then vice versa. So a lot of exciting things are going on. Do you have any questions for me? Any suggestions? I will, one little secret, I am working, I started a yesterday conversa, a conversation with Crystal Gales. Wouldn't that be great to have Crystal Gale on our stage? And it's a, it's a maybe. It's a strong maybe. What, can I answer any questions?
I just have a comment. I just want to say how much I appreciate the transformation that you've done at the, at the Lincoln. You know, I've served on the board previously and. You know, I've served on the board previously, and then you had that passion there, and you've done an incredible job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know we talked to the budget committee about adding the Lincoln back on our list of organizations that we fund, and I think that was money that was still on the park.
And we so appreciate it. We appreciate the financial support. And even though now we are debt-free, the more income we have coming in, or the more buy-in from the community, the more we can do. That's just, that's just how it goes, because we all know that if I have Crystal Gale, I'm going to sell tickets, it'll be great. But the Crystal Gale benefit financially is not going to pay our electric bill. It's not going to pay our water bill. It's not going, and we have huge expenses in that beautiful theater. But it is not inexpensive to operate. Even when, even when we have no events, it's still expensive to operate.
And I also want to thank you for, I mean, it's great program that you all got lined up. I had, I guess it was maybe two Fridays ago, you had a comedian there.
Oh, James Gregory, yes. Sell-out.
I had a ball game for Friday night, and he got canceled, so I said, let's get tickets, James. I go online.
Sold out. Sold out, yes sir.
That's a great one. It hasn't sold out, so.
It is a great program. I love having a sell-out.
And I do have to say, I'm very impressed with your ability to expand the, your target audience. Because my husband, of all people, who I never thought would go inside of a theater, messes me and said, hey, can you get us tickets to the Lincoln? And I'm like, who is this?
So we're, we're expanding, even within music, I'm also talking with Sister Hazel. Who knows Sister Hazel? So the whole spectrum. I did, I was also talking with Kenny Laga. He's really expensive, so I don't think I'm going to get him.
Bristol boy.
Oh, is he really?
Yes, he's really good. He grew up in Bristol.
Are you serious? I need to play the local card.
Good friend of mine, best friend in high school.
Well, I'm going to call you. So there's, any suggestion, just like how this On Any Sunday fiftieth anniversary filming came to be, the conversation started. A patron who is a big motorcycle rider lives in Marion, he came in and he goes, hey, do you think you can maybe show this film for me? I was like, absolutely. I'll do whatever I can. So I love to hear from patrons and from you. Any suggestions you have, any programs we can do that would help enhance the county? I would, I'm wide open, wide open for ideas. Any other questions?
I have one comment, I guess, and maybe I shouldn't say it here, but.
Oh, no.
Before you spend a lot of time and effort on the Back of the Dragon, you need to make sure that you have all your ducks in a row there, because they're very, very protective of their trademark.
Well, I will say that Amanda Livingston has started a great conversation with them. So I'm going to piggyback on her, and just be, how, I'm not going to use their logo. I'm just going to try to engage them, and let's partner. How could that not be a win-win for us all?
VDOT, who's in the audience now, has, they've designated that road as the Back of the Dragon, but the, an individual has trademarked that, and so we got to be very careful.
Yeah, yes.
I was going to tell you to talk to Amanda, so you've already done that.
Oh, yeah. Amanda and I, we chat. Yes. And Sarah Gillespie. I think there's a great team in the county and in, in all the towns, all working together. Anything else? And thank you for allowing me to speak and being patient with my not being a public speaker. Thank you.
Now to VDOT. I love your patience. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, I'll introduce myself. Alan Sumter, I'm the residency administrator for VDOT in the Abingdon Residency. I've got Matthew Lewis, one of your locals, always here, the assistant residency administrator. We normally have Josh with us. Josh snuck off to Disneyland. So he's, yeah, he's vacating, he's supposed to be on his way back. So it's, it's good to be back with you. Remember, we told you we'd come quarterly and give you a report and see if you had any concerns. I'm going to let Matthew come up here and talk about a few specific things in just a little bit, but just kind of as a summary. As you know, we've, we've kind of been in snow season, so a lot of our activity's been working with snow. We've been trying to do some patching and ditching as we, also that we can, working on getting some trees removed in various locations, and also addressing any concerns that you all, you know, send to us along the way. One of the things that I kind of want to kind of give you the heads-up about is that if you remember, it wasn't really, didn't seem like too many months ago, that I came to you all and went over the six-year plan, the secondary six-year plan approval. And in the COVID, we, COVID pandemic, we've kind of been behind schedule on that. Excuse me. We are, we're trying to get that back on schedule, which that's usually a spring process historically. And so we will be contacting Mr. and setting up a schedule to kind of have a discussion with you all about what roads you might want to add to the plan that will be coming up for the next revision. And that will probably happen in the spring. We don't have any financial numbers at this point, so generally, we're kind of talking about, we kind of use estimate around two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand a mile for an unpaved road to improve it. So we'll see how that works out and then how that divides out as well. One thing that, if you have the information packet that you might not have at handy, but I will touch on, we have, this coming year, we have two roads that we will be working on, and those are seven twenty-nine Old Slash Road and seven twenty-nine Kegley Lane. Are the roads that are, this to be worked on this year in the upcoming plan. So, let's see, I was looking to see. A lot of the other projects that we have listed here, as you all know, there's a tremendous amount of work on eighty-one right through this area. And that work is either underway, or it's being designed, and will continue to be coming up. A lot of the acceleration, de-acceleration lanes that, that will be done. And then, one of the projects I remind you of again that's coming along that is of big interest has been here in the county prior even to my arrival and during time is the Route eleven railroad drive intersection improvements. That's moving along as well. So that's pretty much what I was going to go over with you myself. And so I'm going to let Matthew come up and go over maintenance work that we've been doing. And he's not had too hard a day, so feel free to have at him, okay?
Before you step down, I have a question for you.
Okay.
On your paperwork, I hope you got the same thing, where you got the construction activity updates. The I eighty-one corridor project update.
Okay.
The second to last one, our I eighty-one exit forty-seven, you say extend the southbound acceleration lane. At least that's the way I read it.
It's the northbound acceleration lane.
That's sort of what I thought, too. It's on the south side of the road, but it's northbound.
Yeah.
But this is southbound.
The, what it is, is be aware of the slow rolls. The slow rolls take place northbound and southbound across the glass and each day. The slow rolls actually take place in both directions on that project daily.
You still lost me there. It's the, it's the northbound acceleration, acceleration lane that you're expanding, though, correct?
Yes.
On the southbound and northbound side.
Well, there's no work on northbound, north side of the interstate as of right now.
The UPC one sixteen, one fifty-eight?
Right. Are you on the front page?
No, the next page with the table.
Okay.
Actually, it's third, your third page. The second to last on that top table on I eighty-one project updates.
Okay, that's another project that's going to be coming. They're two separate projects.
There's another one coming.
Yes. Yeah, so there's two, there's the northbound side, and then this is that the southbound side, the project has been awarded.
Okay. Okay, so you're doing a little, okay, it makes sense, there's a lot more rock to be removed on the, okay.
There are two separate projects, okay? There, we had information on, underneath the first paragraph, that's the update that I think Matthew is referring to. And then you looking on over at the, on the second page, then you've got the, where it actually falls under that update there that says Fall of two thousand and twenty-two. And then on the other, on page three refers to the second project on forty-seven, southbound, being awarded.
Has that one even been awarded yet then?
That's why it's, it says the project's been awarded. It just hasn't started yet. It's in this column. I don't know the contractor, but you go by the, up there with that project's been awarded. Go ahead.
What does scoping mean?
Scoping means that that's like in design and phase where that our engineers are looking at the project, estimating it out, doing what's needed to be done to prepare, to get the project, everything, materials estimated, everything that's necessary in order to build them. Like our rural restics, you'll see a lot of those that are like the scoping. That also consists of things like getting environmental reviews done to see if we're going to need permits and anything like that. That's kind of a very, very preliminary design. Now, we do have over here on the rural restic, it says preliminary plans. Obviously, you know, we're doing these kind of like just very, very minimal plans. We use straight line diagrams because we're doing it with hired equipment. They're kind of eyeball type projects. But what that's meaning there is our staff is starting to get and work with contractor and that we use and actually, you know, order pipe and, and things of that nature. The scoping is the part where that we're looking at it determining, you know, what is, how many pipes are going to be needed and where they're going to be needed at. Preliminary plans on the rural restics means that we're ordering the pipe and get it and, and talking to the contractor about scheduling and actually making a plan to get out there on, on the road to work. And the, the others that are over here at the larger project, when it says, when it might say scoping, those are, when they are doing a lot of the upper level, looking at them, determining, okay, well, we're going to have to cut this out. So then we're going to need survey here and that, like that. Now, there's also a term, I will clarify for you, it says PAC, P A C, Spring Twenty-Two. That is what we refer to as a pre-advertised, advertisement conference. That's when we get together with different folks on up the line, go over the project, make sure that it is, has everything ready about it, that the contract is prepared, and all the plans are final, no errors found, and getting ready to send it out to advertisement. Does that help with those? It's kind of like everything else, I guess, when you work in field, you know, you speak your own language and your own logos. And so that's that. I apologize for that. Should have explained that a little bit better.
All right. I still have another couple of questions.
Yeah, I have one. I'm driving southbound on eighty-one towards the Bristol area, leaving Marion towards the Chilhau area. I've noticed several sections in the far right-hand lane where I guess the right tire track just before the, the white line would, would show. Apparently, it's like freeze and thaw, cracking, for lack of a better description. Is that any, is that kind of on the radar to repair as you're going down? Because some of it right now is not bad, but I can see it chipping and coming out and creating major potholes at some point.
One of the things that we're doing right now in preparation for the spring, we're keeping an eye, our, kind of our patching kind of philosophy right now is that because asphalt plants aren't open yet, is that we use coal mix and other materials, try to address any kind of deep pothole that might be out there, and then we look at those and, and try to see where we need to come some kind of other permanent patching in the spring as it comes along. Matthew's still involved with the interstate, and if he might be able to speak directly to those when he gets up and let you know where those happen to be. That team is looking at all those every day and riding that corridor multiple times a day.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Route eleven, that's Route sixteen. I'm assuming that's the downtown project there. You had the public hearing on six months ago, under upcoming bridge, smart scale and safety projects, the very first one.
Eleven at sixteen intersection, advertising it. That would, I think that that would fit in, yes. That should probably be it.
Okay. And one of the, and this is a comment me personally, has nothing to do with this board, but I think I don't want, I don't want them. I am really upset, and I don't blame you, I think it's VDOT in Virginia. We have a tremendous need, and Phil's not here to push it, so I will. We've got a bridge that needs to be built to get people into, into the, across the railroad. And I'm upset that VDOT has spent, and I realize it's two different funds, so you know, but VDOT's willing to spend the money to get this roundabout in, which will be nice, but it's not as much of a public safety issue as that bridge should be. And that, that sort of upsets me that, that we're doing, they're both high-end projects, and I'm appreciative of getting it, but I really think that bridge should have been a more priority.
And the bridge is coming.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just my comment. That's not a board opinion. That's personal.
Yeah, and the, the bridge is going to be shifted in order to get with clearance and everything, so the traffic flow and all that. The folks have thought that they need to go hand in hand together, so that's, that's.
Well, the bridge is going to be like a year after the roundabout, though, isn't it?
Well, that, that's true, but they still are in a timeframe that in order to do one and bring the traffic up and then move it, the roundabout needs, Phil needs to be there in order to, to have the flow of traffic once it's done. By the time construction gets out there, I'm not sure that there'll be a lot of, you know, there, there'll be some difference in timeline, but there, there'll be, it'll seem like a ongoing construction, I think, probably.
Well, you know, we've been five, more than five years trying to get something done on that bridge, and that's just, you know, if I lived in McMullen, I'd be very unhappy still. I'd have been here at every board meeting. I really would have. And I just, I, I, I understand where you're coming from. I just want to let you know that I'm upset about it, and that's not my district.
Thank you.
While we're on that topic, I do have one question, just from a public safety standpoint. I know Thomas Bridge Water's water line runs across that bridge, and their water lines go right there at that intersection. Is there conversation about moving those water lines and enhancing those water lines, anything like that?
I'm not, I'm not very into, know the intimate details of that. But typically, what I can tell you is that whenever VDOT goes through this, like we were talking, as I described to you, scoping and all that process, then that is the part of whenever, like, they bring in those types of questions and answer those questions, whether it needs to be done, or it can be afforded to be done, or whatever, and coordinated with any kind of PSA or utilities or anything of any kind.
Okay. I just want to make sure that conversation's happening, because the closest hydrant, which is down in front of the former Lyrd Knives facility, is not working properly. And then there's not a hydrant at all in McMullen, so.
Okay, we'll check on it and see what's going on with that and then let you know. Okay. Matthew, do you want to address the maintenance part?
Your turn at the hot seat there.
I hope you ask him as many questions as you do me, you're a whore, okay?
Asking questions every day.
Oh, good afternoon. Welcome, sir. Congratulations. As far as maintenance plan, I will address the eighty-one. I've allocated some money to our team on the interstate, ready for patching. And like Mr. Sumter said, right now, we're just trying to get through the winter time. Task orders are supposed to be on my desk by the end of this month with their plans of patching, especially in that area. And those areas are on the radar, because this year, all of our paving that we're getting is going to be in the Washington County area of that interstate zone of how we've divided it. So we are planning some extensive patching into Smith County.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just want to make sure it's being looked at, because while it doesn't appear to be a problem right now, it's more of a nuisance. I can see it crater. I could see it cratering out and becoming a serious hazard.
Very good. And while I'm talking to you, the, uh, I have looked into the pavement markings out at Hunger Mother, and I think my discussion so far with traffic has been more on the width of the road and the standards don't meet the criteria. So we have been trying to research that, but I think the criteria is not there for that. Um, as far as maintenance activities, um, I know Mr. Call's not here tonight, but we had, uh, he'd requested some patching in Pleasant Heights. We've taken care of that. Um, we've had a request for some pipe replacement and ditching, um, along seven thirteen Crow Hall Road. And we finally got the environmental clearance on that, and we have a task order issued, so that work should be coming forth with. Um, the, we've had some, um, sign installation on Old Slash Road, got that taken care of, uh, this past week. Um, our maintenance crews, like Mr. Sumter said, has been performing mainly snow operations. However, we have, um, been performing some ditching, a little bit more than what we have in the past, um, along our routes and, um, especially in Smith County. Uh, the crews are working on these prettier days to try to do that and pothole patch, of course. Uh, we do have some plans for a hybrid ditch crew to hopefully, um, be able to do more ditching than we have in the past. So that's going to be one of our main focuses here in the future with our VDOT maintenance crews is to try to ditch some of these areas and get our ditching back up to standard. Um, we're working on some projects along Highway eleven. Hopefully, we'll do some help, um, in the county with some of our schools and things. Let's see, um, we have completed, of course, the rural rustics, uh, for this year. Of course, looking ahead for what we're, got planned for this summer. Um, and like I said, mainly through the winter months, we don't have as much to report because we are mainly in snow removal operations. And then as soon as you come out of that, you get into poth- pothole patching operations to try to keep the potholes patched, so. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to thank you all for what you do, because you all have taken care of a lot of things that we've called and asked or whatever. So I just want to show much appreciate, and I also know that Matthew spends a lot of time, as you probably know, out with emergency services when we have wrecks on Interstate eighty-one. I know he's out there a ton of times, so I just want to thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I do have all the way up. You're the member. Um, the Dade Wood Lane, I think we had spoke with you about it.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know where we're at on that as far as the status? That's, that is actually in my district and I, and before you, uh, answer that, I have a couple of quick questions, and I'm just not sure exactly what I need to do, how need to go about addressing those. Um, I have Colonial Heights in, on top of Riverside Road. Uh, I had a resident there that is requesting about the, uh, possibility of it becoming a state maintained road. That the, that's a small, uh, little subdivision. Just before you get to the, uh, overrated grocery.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, the other one, Williams Road off of Mattson Drive. I, I know it, it's got some type of surface on it, but they was, uh, questions about it actually being a hardtop, like a finished hardtop.
Okay.
But sorry, as far as.
It may just be surface treated and I can, I'll check into it for you.
But as far as the Dade Wood, I, I wanted to get those out real quick so I wouldn't forget, but, um.
The Dade Wood Lane to address that, we are drafting a response. Um, we've, we've been working on that, uh, we had a couple more little details we were checking on, but that draft is actually being, um, or that response is being drafted. So I, they, they told me, they said, well, we think we can get it out for the board meeting. I said, well, we're, I don't think, you know, let's make sure we get it right, so it'll be coming probably next week. Um, and then the Colonial Heights, we'll, uh, look into that and follow back up with you, and same for Williams Road.
I probably need to, better give you just a little explanation about, uh, bringing a road into the system. For a road to, um, to be brought in, now, um, our funds have, there used to be a specific fund. It was a very small amount of money to bring in roads into the state system. There had to be like, uh, three homes on it, and then we allocated money. And the mon- that, that fund actually at that time got to be down so low that like, say for a, um, uh, a county like this, you probably were seeing like three to five thousand dollars allocated when it was allocated a year. So if you're talking about that and then a two hundred, same cost, basically, two hundred thousand a mile, you can imagine how long it would have ever taken in order to get a, um, a project, um, uh, you know, with enough funding to bring it in. The shift in focus over the last several years was to, uh, use a process there with revenue sharing. And with the revenue sharing, then what would happen is that, uh, that was an eligible type project. And a county would say, okay, this is a project we're interested in doing, uh, to bring this in. And so if, um, we would like to apply for revenue sharing and then get a match for that. So if it costs two hundred thousand to build it, then however, um, it was done and give you, um, give you example, Washington County, just using, since we still do a little bit down there, the way Washington County and some other counties did, on occasion, they have like created like a tax zone or something in there for them in their area or some kind of special levy, where that like if it was the, the share is a hundred thousand dollars, um, was the county's half and VDOT matched it for that, then the county recouped that over, say, twenty years by charging, you know, property owners so much, um, and their tax assessment for that being brought in. There are different methods, but basically the most effective way now has been to do a revenue sharing match or otherwise then like a developer would, that the residents get together, find out what the spec was, construct it, and then we would take it in after that, uh, you know, after that's been done. Um, the, um, and just so you know, you, um, having worked in the area, you probably hear, well, they're doing it in Wise County, or they've done it in, in Buchanan County or whatever. A lot of times those counties have used coal, coal severance tax funds that they've had to put forward for the match to do that, or in some cases, many years ago even, uh, you know, use that like as a hundred percent funding in order to get that done. But unfortunately, our VDOT source of that funding is, um, has kind of dried up over the years there with that. And, um, even what we were doing, we were only doing a five percent match each year of what the rural rustic funds were that you could apply for roads that, like say if you were getting, um, had a hundred thousand dollars, um, in, in a paper of money, you could decide to allocate five percent of that toward rural additions, roads to be brought in. So that again is like the five thousand that I'm talking about, that you take and start putting that and banking that. And you can, you know, um, I'm an engineer, but I still hit, uh, deal with a little bit of hesitancy with math sometimes, and you can still yet figure out five thousand into two hundred thousand, takes a long time to come up with it. Um, causes some frustration with folks there, you know, that lives along the road in order to be able to do that. So as I said, not trying to belabor the point. Usually, the most effective way is try to create something with, um, with the revenue sharing. Now, I will tell you, I think that, uh, some of you may have been here on the board, um, and I'm not sure if, um, Sean, if you were here yet or not, but we did have one project that was put in, at least I probably remember is it, where the county wanted to apply for that, and I believe that one's still out there.
Yeah, I'm hoping to.
And it's going to be.
I didn't work it up tonight, but I did have to have that.
Yeah.
Evergreen Circle and just behind Mrs. Fergles' home.
Yeah. And that's one that when we had the, um, had some funding issues that come up, it was applied for, but it was not going to receive funding in that revenue sharing until like twenty-four, twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five now. So I know I sound discouraging to that, but that's just the fact, so you know, of how that, that, that works. We just don't have the ability that, okay, unfortunately, that you as a board member say, hey, we'd like for you to come down there. And for the residents, many times it, you know, it makes, you know, thanks to them, or you know, their thinking is, is that, hey, all we need is just somebody come down here and put us a little, uh, you know, some gravel and, and put some tar on it, and it would be just as good as any other road. But there's a lot of other things that goes into it there with it to.
A lot of scoping that happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Scoping.
The, the revenue sharing, that, that's pretty common across the Commonwealth now.
Revenue sharing, there are di- there, there are different layers of, um, of, um, tier level, levels they call it, of approval. Um, certain projects get, um, you know, higher funding.
Higher priority.
Get a higher priority than others, but that is one of the areas that, um, you know, apply for. Some, some counties, um, you know, will put in for, um, as, you know, they'll try to get a match of like two million dollars or so. And generally, the, they have a cap statewide on about fifty, has been in the past somewhere forty, fifty million dollars, uh, when they're awarded annually, that they go through the tier level and that would be state, you know, uh, you know, match that, which statewide would end up being a hundred million dollars worth of projects when the, you know, whatever entity, which it has to be through the county, whether you collect it through somebody else or, you know, or town or whatever. It, uh, the, the citizens can't make that application for the revenue sharing. It has to be the locality, whether that be a town or, or a county, to do that, to, to apply for that. And then, um, when the time comes, VDOT says, okay, well, we need the check in order to get the match. Then, then we need that, or otherwise the, the, the money goes away. Okay, does that help?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have a, a really quick one, and this might be for Mr. Lewis. Um, I was asked to bring up on Adwolf Road, um, the curvy road signs were maybe updated recently. And I'm still learning my, my landmarks, but Meek Hill.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one direction has a curvy road, but what the neighbor thought was the more dangerous direction does not have the curvy road sign.
Correct.
Uh, if you could just check on that for us.
We will. That's on Meek Hill, alright. We will check on that.
Matthew, your, your message is not as depressing as it is what.
That's why I laugh.
It's all in the delivery.
That's why, yeah, that's why I'm here. There, so to kind of get that, he, he, then, but the thing that, that you don't see is that what you tell Matthew to fix, I tell him he better be getting it fixed.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, and were you done with your report? Okay, so in conclusion, I guess, if y'all don't have anything for us, is, um, we're going to be waiting to get the timeframe on when that they're telling us we've got to have our updates for the six-year plan, that public hearing again. Most likely, we're probably talking April or May or something that's of that timeframe. If it's April, May, June, or whatever, we're trying to work it in there to coordinate our next visit to go along with that. But, um, we won't let it go too long, okay? If they tell us that we're not, you know, something, we're not going to get the plan updated till June or something, we'll still come back in April and, um, and make a quarterly visit with you then. But we like to try to work it together, it works best, I think, for y'all too.
I, I appreciate the fact that you do come back and give us an update. It gives, it gives us a chance to see face to face and, and a chance to know what's going on, so I appreciate it.
And if, and, uh, it seems to work pretty good if, you know, you just, you know, either, you can call Matthew. I'm just kidding, you can call him, yes, but Matthew is accessible, we'll work through with, um, with Sean, and he, he's very quick to get things to us. And we try to, to check into them and do something about one way or the other, if we can, we try to do something. If not, we try to let you know it's something we can't do anything about as quickly as we can. Okay?
Bring good news next time.
Well, I kind of brought good news, I kind of told him how the process works for the.
Learned a lot tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Y'all have a good night.
Does anyone need to break?
No, let's roll on down here.
All right, we're back up to our minutes of previous meetings.
Make them onto a free best presentation.
I'll second it.
And we motion to second, we have any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All right, um, now the financial status report, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, there in front of you, and as Laura said, I'll move on here. Um, there in front of you in your desk, you should have the revenue and expenditure summary. I'll begin with the revenue side through the, this report is through the end of January. And I'll just flick you back to the back page with the totals concerned. Uh, the revenue collected for the month of January was five million nine hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Bringing our year-to-date through the end of January to sixty million, one hundred forty thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Leaving, remaining in the budget, forty million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars and five cents. And on the expenditure side, again, to go to the totals of all funds spent on the back page, page five. The current out through January thirty-first, uh, expended was seven million, nine hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty cents. Bringing our year-to-date expended to forty-nine million, sixty thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and seven cents. Leaving a remaining balance in the budget of fifty-one million, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred five dollars and ninety-three cents. Um, with the treasurer's report, you should have the county expenses and appropriation in your agenda on page forty. Again, this is through January thirty-first. The, uh, bank balance was nineteen million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. On the next page, your page forty-one, the county water and sewer. There was an ending balance uncollected on water and sewer of two million, six hundred five thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. And your, um, uncollected county taxes from two thousand and one to twenty-twenty. There's an uncollected balance of two million, eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Your uncollected county taxes for twenty-twenty-one through the end of January is two million, seventy-three thousand, four hundred one dollars and ninety-one cents. Also, your treasurer's accountability report is included in your agenda there on page forty-two.
Mr. Chairman, this question.
Right here.
And this might be a dumb question, but I, I'm just curious, like, why we started with two thousand and three, with the, um, like the write-offs and the laws and all that for the water and sewer. I think that was almost twenty years ago, I guess, I'm just curious why we're still talking about it.
I've actually heard of that. Um, so in two thousand and three, with the county, I guess, and, uh, Mr. Raskin's may be able to answer that, we give a loan to the water fund, basically, and that one point nine million dollar. Two thousand and nine, we actually wrote off four point six, four, four point oh, oh, six million. Those, well, the four, four million dollar one, really, that's gone.
Okay.
But for some reason, the, uh, turn, the treasurer would like to, for us to continue to remember, there's a four million dollar write-off in history.
It makes me want to throw up every time I read it, so I'm kind of.
I always focus on that two point six of old one. Um.
And I think it's miss, like, it was representing to our citizens, and it's like, well, if people are paying their water bill, then I'm just going to pay mine. And I don't think that's a good picture thing, but.
I think the Davenport study had a really good explanation last year. If you remember, they had, they, they kind of dissected both of those, and it really made a whole lot more sense.
Theirs was a lot better explanation than whatever this is.
Yeah, I, I'm sitting down, we're going to sit down with the treasurer on Monday, we can see what changes can, can be made.
What I always look, just FYI, what I always look at this is, I look at the current period, which is your deposit. That's the deposit just for the current month, plus, plus, less the expenses. And I figure, okay, for the month of January, it looks like our water department actually generated a little revenue.
Right.
I mean, I think everything else is really irrelevant.
It is, right, because, I, I mean, I was like fourteen years old then, I don't really care about that.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this? Hearing none, we'll, uh, move to the reason that was presented is so we can pay the invoices which were attached. Hearing none, we'll, uh, move to the reason that was presented, is so we can pay the invoices which were attached. Uh, we got an accounts payable listing there, do we have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve the accounts payable listed. Uh, we've already appropriated it, so I guess, uh, all those in favor paying those bills now, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All righty, citizens' time.
I think it took a long time for them.
Yeah, but we don't have anyone signed up.
We got one citizen, would you like to speak?
I'm a citizen, I'm here just to, uh, I was told that you all might be considering, uh, wastewater funding for the ARPA grant, there's some documentation. And, uh, just here to answer any questions or support if needed.
Okay, sorry to make you wait for so long till we get there.
No, it's not wrong, I'm enjoying your good work here.
Entertaining.
Yeah, we don't charge for the entertaining, but that's free. All right, uh, maybe our newspaper wants to come at this time.
Often.
Can't get anyone to, okay, I'll close, citizens' time. All right, now we get into old business, proposing amendment to Smith County Code, section twenty-three, article eight, excuse me, article thirteen, in regards to transient occupancy tax.
So, at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Wonder asked about the, the, um, potential to exempt, um, the tax for, um, emergency needs or for folks that are in, uh, a pu- public disaster, a natural disaster. Uh, I spoke with the Commissioner of Revenue's office to see what the logistics would be for that. He highly suggested that, since we're, right now, we only have one large, larger taxpayer being the comfort end that would be involved with something like this, everything else is in the town, on the, the town limits. Uh, he suggested that we have a, a, a side agreement with them, that we provide, basically provide a grant back to the, um, the, uh, the, the citizen, um, or we can pay that tax, reimburse the, um, the, we can pay the tax instead of the citizen paying it. Um, that's gonna take a little bit more negotiating and, and, um, deciphering, but, um, I, you know, I did come up with a, a what-if, and if someone was forced to stay five nights there, uh, you're looking at about twenty-two dollars and fifty cents for, um, uh, the tax that would be involved. Uh, so we can do a twenty-two dolla, twenty-three dollar, uh, check back to the citizen or, or the, the hotel to cover the tax, whatever you wished. I think that would be an, an easier way to do it, rather than trying to figure out who was, who was, um, who to charge, or who the hotel should charge and shouldn't charge, 'cause their system is set up to automatically be there.
I agree. So, just, so I want to think, so the, the citizen just requests that exemption?
Well, they, I think what we can do is talk to the manager there, and, and when they have someone that's in that situation, they know to call and let us know, hey, we've got someone that's gonna be here for two weeks. Or, you know, that, that tax is gonna be, or that the room cost is gonna be X, and we know, I can go ahead and do a check, well, since we do checks every week now, we can do a check made payable to that citizen for X amount, uh, whatever that, that taxes would be.
But a lot of times.
That way the citizen pays the tax, gets a check back from us for the value of the tax.
But a lot of times, it might not be the citizen actually paying it, it may be a, the Red Cross, or Salvation Army, or, or a local church paying it, isn't it?
And we, that's, we would pay, we would reimburse whoever's paying the hotel, but not necessarily.
Yeah, okay. All right, folks, what do we do here?
Approve the ordinance for the.
Present a motion?
Oh. I, I do have a comment really quick, it's from, from an email I received from one of my constituents. I have not responded yet, 'cause I'm trying to gather a little bit more information, but his email is basically expressing his frustration with how some of the Airbnbs and, um, overnight stays are not being charged the occupancy tax.
So there's some legislation at the state level right now, that, right now, an Airbnb, or a Verbo, or those large conglomerates, they're not required to, um, collect it. They're basically saying, okay, we will, we'll, we'll sell your room for you, um, but you need to go ahead and collect it yourself or figure out some other way to pay this tax. There's some legislation to fix it, 'cause we're not, by far, nowhere near the only county that's, that's dealing with this. So hopefully, the legislation that's out there will require, um, uh, the online sales to, to collect local taxes same, same way they're required to collect state taxes. Knock on wood, that goes through, and, and July first, we'll, we'll be, uh, cleaning that up.
Okay.
But I would say that's, that's nowhere near a Smith County problem, that's a Commonwealth of Virginia problem.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
And that being said, we will have another amendment to the ord- to the transient occupancy tax later on in the summer to, to address that same reference.
What are we gonna do tonight? Do we adopt this one that we got in front of us now?
This does clean up a lot of things if we do, yeah, I'd recommend.
I'll make a motion to adopt, as far as I know.
Okay, have a motion to adopt, I'll have a second.
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion passes. Okay, now we're moving on to propose ordinance authorizing a junior firefighters program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the junior firefighter program ordinance.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? I just wanna comment that I've got some positive feedback from a couple of departments that they're, I guess, we're, I don't know if we're excited, but they're happy that we're thinking about it, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous. Pathway Regional Industrial Facility Authorization, Authority Ordinance Amendment, Public Hearing Update.
I wanted to, to give you an update, so at the last meeting, you scheduled a public hearing for that for the February twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, we have been presented with two special use permit requests and a, and a rezoning request for that night. Um, that would require a joint public hearing with the, with the, um, planning commission. I would like to recommend that we move the pathway, um, public hearing to March tenth, just so it, I think that, that one's gonna be a, a little, a lot, lot less, um, I wouldn't say volatile, but, um.
Controversial.
Controversial, yeah, so I would like to do that, and that way we can go ahead and get that scheduled.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move the public hearing for the Pathway Regional Industrial Facilities Authority to March the tenth.
Second. Have a motion, a couple of seconds, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like we pass you now, Ms. Lee. Committee reports recommendations. Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the Public Safety Committee met on February third at eleven AM. Uh, myself, Mr. Sturgis, Mr. Widener in attendance, um, staff in attendance, Sean, Lisa, Curtis, Shannon, Sheriff Schuler, uh, Major Juano, and Paul Hurley. We had visitors from the fire departments in the, uh, county that presented their budget requests to us. Uh, they were very, very appreciative of us, of us reaching out. Uh, I know Mr. Chief Widener from the Adolph Fire Department, said he's been on the department for twenty-five years, and that's the first time that the county's ever reached out for them to engage and actually, um, be able to present their budget requests and give a presentation, so they're very thankful. Chief Waddle from the Ubo Fire Department was here as well, and Captain Matthew Lively from the Sugar of Life Saving Crew was here, uh, to present. Uh, so they presented their, um, basically their needs and, um, the requests for their budget for this year. You can, I won't go into detail about what they talked about, but you can, uh, read over that. Next, uh, guest that we had was Mark Hutchinson from Blue Line Solutions. Uh, this is a company that, uh, Mr. Ut and Mr. Atkins and I had spoke to while we were in Norfolk for a VACO meeting. And, um, this company is very focused on work zone safety and safety in school zones, uh, for speed enforcement. So, um, you actually have a packet at, at your table, uh, from Blue Line Solutions that specifically gives information about their program. They did do a speed study at the end of last year in the school zones at Chilhawee Elementary School and Atkins Elementary School, and the numbers were pretty staggering to see how many people speed through, uh, those, just those two, um, school zones alone. Uh, so, uh, we basically are looking at this as a proactive approach to speed enforcement. Uh, what they do is send out, uh, they work with the, with the school board and send out letters to the families to say, hey, did you know three thousand cars per week speed through your school zone? Uh, so, so the goal is to really do a strong PR push to let everybody know, um, hey, slow down. And then, um, the next step would be actually putting up, uh, speed enforcement cameras, uh, and they actually process, this, this organization processes the summons and all those things, they collect the fines and keep a certain amount of incentive onto the county. So we kinda talked back and forth about the numbers and what the potential was for, uh, the county to receive through that funding. We didn't really determine kind of next step, but I, the one question I did have for Mr. Ut is, is this something that we'd have to put out an RFP for? Or what's that process?
I would suggest doing one, because we've appro- been approached by a second firm. I think any time you have, uh, two different ones, I think it would be safer to go ahead. And I have some sample RFPs from other localities that we can, we can put together.
Okay, great, so I think, you know, obviously, we just had the presentation from VDOT, we have four major projects going on in the work zones on eighty-one, uh, coming up over the next several years. And then, of course, um, especially with Chilhawee High School, Middle School, and Elementary School, they're right on Route eleven, same as Atkins Elementary. Uh, I think, um, it's very important that we focus on safety in those work zones and, um, in those school zones. So, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate for us to make the motion as a committee, if you want us to go back to that, or if you all wanna make the motion tonight to move forward with the RFP.
Speed, it sounds like it'd be great if we, you had it tonight.
Do we make a motion?
Sure.
For an RFP?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, put out an RFP for.
Speed enhancement.
Speed enhancement, cameras in, for school zones, uh, work zones on, on your state.
All right, we have any, we have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? This is just to put out the RFPs, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed likewise? Sounds like we got it.
Great.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would point out that if you want to hire these people, you need to adopt an ordinance. So, if you want direct me to draft the ordinance and bring it back to you, then you would have to set a public hearing and decide whether or not you want to adopt the ordinance, but you need the ordinance before you can put that system in place, so. I'm happy to draft that, uh, I've seen the dra- I've seen samples, and we're working on one with counties, so.
We can put it on the next Public Safety Committee agenda for, for that one, 'cause I figure it'll probably take sixty days at least to work through all of it.
Yeah, you can do them too, you can do them both of them together, you know, you just don't pull the trigger and hire them till you adopt the ordinance, so.
Okay.
Okay, great, any other questions about that program? Okay, moving on to, um, we kinda skipped, 'cause Mr. Hutchinson's sitting through all the budget presentations, so I skipped ahead and let him present, and then we went back to budget requests. So, the next was for, um, the department request from Sugar Grove Life Saving Crew. Uh, the next, we had a brief radio feasibility study discussion, uh, I know we, uh, have been talking about that for quite some time. Uh, one of the things that is important for us to, to kind of focus on right now, um, a meeting has been held with AT&amp;T to discuss the concept combining towers throughout the county, uh, to extend the land mobile radio system and add LTE, LTE coverage for responders. So, what we are hoping, if all the stars align and God gives favor on Smith County, we can erect these towers and have cellphone service in the county, and then also use those towers, uh, for our new radio system. That will help cut the cost. So, when you say your nighttime prayers before you fall asleep, keep that in. Um, the next item we discussed, uh, was, let's see, oh, hiring a radio technician, uh, to overview the system and continue maintenance to prevent getting back into the situation we're in, 'cause basically, we had an ongoing radio problem that just snowballed, um, and now we are where we are. For the right certifications and training, it'd be in the range of sixty thousand to seventy thousand dollars a year, and I believe this would be a shared position, is kind of what we had all agreed, like the school board, sheriff department, county, et cetera, et cetera. So, that was just the basic discussion. Uh, and then the last, oh, I'm s- I'm sorry, we have a motion made by, uh, Courtney Widener to send this topic to the ordinance committee, and then it was seconded by Mike Sturgis, so that is a committee recommendation. And that is for the radio position.
Now, actually, the, the requirement, that was for the cell towers to change the zoning ordinance.
Oh.
Um, to require us to be allowed to be on cell towers rather than ask for permission.
Sorry, thank you for referring that. Paul does her minutes different than Curtis does. Okay, so let me rephrase, forget what I just said. Mr. Widener made a motion to send the topic of the cellphone towers and the ordinance, um, to the ordinance committee, to adopt that ordinance, so. That was taken by Mr. Sturgis, and that is a committee recommendation.
Okay, you have a committee recommendation, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed likewise? All righty, that passes.
Great, and then last, um, Shannon Williams advised that he's exploring continuity of his position for the near pu- future. Uh, Mr. Ut advised that maybe the radio tech can move into that position, uh, and I request that it be added to the budget committee for consideration during the budget process, and we adjourned at twelve forty-nine.
Good, nothing to hit load on there?
No.
All righty, that was the Public Safety Committee. I guess Solid Waste Committee.
Yeah, there's a lot going on at the committee.
Since Mr. Colley and Mr. Stevenson are here, I'd be glad to do that report.
Yeah, especially since I missed the meeting.
Okay.
I did not have that on my calendar, I apologize.
That's okay, we, I'll, I'll be very brief, we met on February third at ten o'clock. Um, we just had a few discussion items, the first, um, and most important thing that we talked about was transfer station RFP process. We've gone through the process and have a, um, a draft agreement with Draperate and Associates, I think the copy's in your packet for your review. Um, the committee recommend, or reviewed everything, and, um, ultimately, uh, Norfolk District Supervisor Phil Stevenson made a motion to approve the Draperate proposal with the addendum to the proposal agreement that there be two separate fee options for the county to utilize based on concept land development. Salt, the Saltville District Supervisor Roscoe Cole seconded the motion that was passed unanimously. That breaks down to, right now, uh, some background, we are leasing the current location of the transfer station. We'll be, you know, negotiating possible acquisition at the same time as design of a new station elsewhere if the acquisition doesn't fall out. So they just wanted those breakdowns, and those two options broken out into, um, two different cost figures. And that's a recommendation of the committee.
Okay, a recommendation or a motion?
Motion.
Motion to committee, okay, any further discussion? When does the current contract for that lease run out?
September of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so we, we need to be going now?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Definitely need to be going now, 'cause it's expensive.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, the property that's owned by the county right beside that, is it, is it accessible? I mean, it, does it need a lot of improvement, or?
Yeah, that'd be a fair amount of grading, um, and construction cost, um.
But we could pay for it with what we're paying monthly to lease the space we're on.
If we had done it.
If we would've done it, it's a little, good. It's a great question. It really is.
All right, any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed likewise? Motion passes, and I, I can't stress enough, we need to keep this ball moving, we don't need to get down to the deadlines and have to renegotiate again.
Absolutely.
Now, we're to the Water and Sewer Committee.
You're the only one that's left.
Let's go, but I can do it if I need to.
I'd be glad to do it if you'd like.
If, if you don't mind.
Okay, um, the Water and Sewer Committee. The Water and Sewer Committee met on February 3rd at 10:30 and they had a few discussion items centered around the county wa, countywide water study. Again, we've, we've gone through the RFP process and with the ARPA committee's recommendation to fund up to $85,000 for that study, we took it to the Waters, Water Sewer Committee to approve the lane group and their agreement to, to do the study. North Fork District Supervisor Phil Stevenson made the motion to recommend approval of the lane group study and to authorize county administrator to execute any necessary documents on behalf of the county. And Vice Chair of Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal seconded the motion that was unanimously approved, a motion from committee.
Any discussion, that's a committee recommendation, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed likewise? Okay.
The next item, the good news of having the lane group, they're very connected to the funding agencies. So we met with Rural Development and Rural Development is offering a $50,000 planning grant to go with the ARPA or subsidize the ARPA funding. So we won't have to use all of that $85,000. So there's a, there's a draft resolution in your packet that the committees reviewed and recommended that the board adopt. Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal made a motion to recommend the approval of the resolution for USDA Rural Development Pre-Development Planning Grant. North Fork District Supervisor Phil Stevenson seconded the motion and it was unanimously approved. That's a motion from committee.
Okay, have a motion, all, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All right.
And then there were some other discussions regarding the water department activities and employment, and I think we'll, we'll take care of those administratively.
Yeah, the last motion you have there, I really think we're stepping on toes when we start making hire and pay recommendations from this board. I think that's the county job of the county administrator. And if we make the decision and it don't work out, we can't fuss at him, we have to fuss at ourselves, so.
Yeah, we'll take care of it administratively.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. That's the committee report.
So we're just killing, killing that motion?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Do we need to take any official action to kill it?
Just don't add.
Okay. All righty.
And then we had to approve the additional ARPA committee review that was added to the agenda.
Yes, let's do that right now.
You have about 30 minutes. Here she goes.
This.
In your stack of papers.
This is somewhere in the stack.
There you go.
Okay, a meeting of the Smith, the Smith County American Rescue Plan Act Committee was held at the county office building on February 8th. I'm not going, we're, we're about all there. We had three missing, the rural representative, the Atkins representative and the Rye Valley representative were not present. We had some pretty, you know, for an hour meeting that lasted two hours. So we had some pretty good discussion. We had three presentations and I'm going to jump on down. Emergency Service Director Curtis Crawford thanked the committee for allowing him and Chief David Helms from Chilhauie Fire Department to be here and present their proposal before the committee. Mr. Crawford said they had been approached by the Virginia Department of Fire to become a premier fire training facility in southwest Virginia, this side of Roanoke, and said it would be also benefits surrounding counties. In other words, 13 counties in southwest Virginia want to be able to come to Chilhauie and do their fire training and burning buildings in classrooms. Currently, we do not have the classrooms and when they do classroom training, they do it all the way at, at Aden Wolf and then they have to pack up and drive to Chilhauie to the facilities. And sometimes they need the equipment in Aden Wolf and they need it in Chilhauie and getting the equipment and so forth back and forward has really been very detrimental to the class itself. So, let me read on after I've added on to that. Emergency Service Director Curtis Crawford thanked the committee for allowing him and the, okay, Mr. Crawford discussed his quest for funding and the state wants us to do that. Mr. Crawford said they have been approached by the state and become a premier fire training this side of Roanoke. Said the, Mr. Crawford said the classroom facility is the missing component. Mr. Crawford discussed two separate funding options for the committee to consider. Chilhauie District Supervisor Michael Sturgill thanked the emergency personnel for all they do. Discussion ensued. Smith County, our next topic, next presenter then was the Smith County Director of Chamber of Commerce, Sir Gillespie presented her request for funding from the ARPA committee. Mrs. Gillespie discussed her $300,000 proposal regarding a Smith Strong grant to help small business within Smith County and added that the chamber would serve as the organizer and the EDA would serve as fiscal agent over the funds. Mrs. Gillespie said the funds are more focused to allow small business to continue to move forward and strengthen them within our community. Mrs. Gillespie also discussed a second part of the ARPA funding request regarding essential worker pay and asked the committee for feedback. Mrs. Gillespie thanked the committee for their consideration with this request. Discussion ensued. And Director Tourism Maureen DeLivison presented her request regarding external marketing funds directed towards folks outside of the county to bring in more tourism and added her request would be geared towards splitting those funds over three fiscal years. Mrs. DeLivison also thanked the committee for their consideration. Then finally, the Executive Director of Mount Rogers Regional Partnership, Josh Lewis, presented his proposal, uh, his request for ARPA funding. Mr. Lewis gave a paraport presentation on his proposal and provided many static regarding population loss in the region and proposals to help reverse that trend. Mr. Lewis added that MRRP is looking to obtain funding to jumpstart the Mount Rogers I-1, I-77 Crossword Program within Smith County. Mr. Utter said this is a worthwhile cause and he does not want Smith County to be left behind on this. He noticed that funding had been secured from each county in the region except Smith County. Mr. Lewis thanked the committee for allowing him to be here and present his request. Finally, Mr. Williams presented the Saltville Library request for funding in the amount of $15,000 to help with the facility study to see if locations can be remodeled or if it should be relocated. After discussion, the committee decided to defer any decision on this request at this time. Then finally, Mr. Williams read a letter on behalf of the Blue Ridge Discovery Centers urgent request for funding in the amount of 200, up to $250,000 for wastewater treatment center, which is needed before they can become operational. The committee discussed the importance of each of these requests presented at the meeting as well as the amount of funding that may be needed, may be needed for implementation of the county's wide water study. There was a consensus among the members to move forward on recommending funding for several projects presented this evening. Vice Chair of Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal made a motion to recommend the approval of 250,000 for the Blue Ridge Discovery Center request for a wastewater treatment. North Fork District Representative John McLean seconded the motion. Now, this is out of the 5.9, I'm rounding now, this is out of the 5.9 million dollars that we have been presented to be able to use between now and 2024. But that's a committee recommendation, that's our committee recommendation, so any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote because we have to, we on the board here have to approve that money being spent now. All those in face say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed likewise? I'm hearing none, so unanimous. Finally, the next item of business was Park District Representative, Mr. Mike Robinson made a motion to recommend to approve the Mount Rogers Regional Partnership request for, for 210,000 for the Mount Rogers I-1, I-77 Crossword Talent Recruitment Program. North Fork District Supervisor, uh, North Fork District Representative, John McLean seconded the motion. Any discussion?
What, what exactly is the talent recruitment program?
I can speak to that. So the, the biggest issue that, that Mr. Lewis is bringing, is, is working on is we, as a region, we've brought in 2,500 additional jobs with, with county, one project. Not including that, we've probably brought in 4,000 in the last five years or so, maybe it was the last decade. We've lost about 8,000 citizens. So it's a net, I mean, we're, we're really hurting about 12,000 individuals. So what his goal is to start working with the schools, start working with some marketing agencies to bring people in, to bring the, when the kids graduate and go off to college, bring them back, figure out somehow to, to fix this population loss. I think Smith County, we were the biggest losers of the Mount Rogers region. I think we lost about 9%, eight and a half percent of our population in the last decade. So it's a huge hit for us, we need to, to do something. I think it's a really creative project. What he's going to do is to, is he's, he's looking to hire three people, three full-time people, and he's partnering with the community foundations around the region. So the Twin County Foundation is, is fully committed. The With Land Foundation is fully committed. The Concerned with Smith County Foundation, they're going through restructuring right now. And right now, currently, they can only focus on hospital-related investments. They're hopefully getting everything worked out later on in the summer, they can do something else, but this $110,000 is year one and we're hoping the community foundation reaches or steps in for year two and three.
Thank you.
And I will tell you, that is, that is a problem. I've been a high school principal for many years, that we graduate a lot of kids who go off to school.
That don't come back.
I know I had one particular class that had, I know we've had 40 kids to graduate and go on to college at Chilhauie High School and to best of my knowledge, zero of them live in Smith County now.
Okay.
Out of 40, graduated out of that one class.
And I think the timing of this is important too because with COVID, it's kind of made everybody rethink like, I really can live in a rural area and not have to commute to DC or city traffic. And I, I think this is a really good time to open ourselves up and remind ourselves that's a good place to live.
And we need, and we need for these people to come back here and live.
Yes, which is also why it's important for our housing developments and
Yes.
Infrastructure expansions, we need to be doing all those things.
All righty. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the 110,000 for the Mount Rogers Crossword Talent Recruitment Program, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Hear no opposition? Finally, by the way, there's a lot of, a lot of talk went on between these motions, believe me, a lot of talk. It wasn't just lightly. Done. Vice Chair, Vice Chair of Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal made a motion to recommend to approve this 364,500 year one fee request for the Smith County Fire Training Academy. Park District Representative, Dr. Mike Robinson seconded the motion. And I want to, that's year one funding, their request was for the double that amount and we have only at this point funded the first half.
And now we're going to be looking for other funding sources for the second half, so that number could change.
Yep. Okay, any discussion, questions?
Is this part of the construction?
Yeah, this, this constructs the building, basically.
Oh, okay. Are, are they looking at, actually constructing this on the site of the, with the firehouse?
Yes. In behind treatment plant.
Okay.
I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
They claim that they'll have, they claim they'll have sufficient parking and everything in order to make that a good site and the term used was state of the art for southwest Virginia and I'd like to see them do it.
And it's very visible from the interstate, which is a great marketing.
And our, our fire departments in this county would be more or less, you know, paid for and other counties would have to pay their way into it. So that would help generate revenue as an ongoing.
I know, I know the burn house there has been very.
Yeah, well, we're going to be upgrading that too, so.
Is that property where they're talking about putting it, is it in the floodplain?
It is. They'll actually, they'll have to elevate the building and I think they have all that design.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Yeah, all good questions. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed likewise? I don't hear any opposition once again. Okay, Chilhauie District Representative Ronnie Corbin made a motion to recommend to approve 50,000 for external marketing purpose for Smith County tourism. Park District Representative, Dr. Mike Robinson seconded the motion. And this is for Amanda to do marketing now instead of having to wait to get the money this fall. You know, a dollar spent now will give us a lot more than a dollar spent seven months from now. So that's why we, this was pushed to now and not later on. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed likewise? I didn't hear any opposition again. Mr. Williams, this, this is the guy I'm talking about, noted that as soon as the Chamber of Commerce provides their additional data requests during discussion, he will send out a poll to the committee to help schedule the next meeting. That being, no further meeting, we adjourn at 6:02, so we got overtime at that meeting.
We did.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. I was just going to say, just as a recap here, I was just doing some math, it looks like we're landing at 774,000 of the 5.9 million.
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay.
We were trying to be, and basically what is, what we're waiting on, in case y'all don't know, the water study that we're, the 85,000 we approved for the water study, that will tell us how we want, the committee, at least, and I'm, I think I'm speaking for the committee here, they're right next to me. We're wanting to do a lot to promote housing in Smith County with this money.
Agreed.
And we think the water study will help us decide where to spend that money for housing and so forth. And we're, we're more or less, we felt that these projects needed to be addressed right now. They couldn't wait till five, six months from now. Anything else we get, hopefully we will wait and that way we'll have most of the money still available.
Gotcha.
We were hesitant to award, and really, what number did you come up with there?
If my math is right, 774 and change.
Okay, it really, it's full over a million because in my opinion, you can't fund half of the fire program and not do the other half. If, if they can't find other grants, you know, we're going to have to, but we can do that down the road.
Yeah.
Don't mean to be negative, but nothing worse than letting them build half a building and it just sat there.
Yeah.
All right. Now we're up to the.
Can I make those motions that we discussed from ARPA? It's okay.
Yeah, if you want to, go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, so in, as Mr. Atkins said during that ARPA committee meeting, we had very in-depth discussions. I think there's a couple items that were discussed that night and actually requested that I, I feel like we can fund from our general fund and it's not necessarily something that we need to put off of ARPA. The specific ones that I think will make the biggest impact right now, but I would like to make a motion for, the first one is I want to make a motion to use funds from supplemental appropriations in the amount of $15,000 for the request from the Saltville Library.
To go toward the study?
To go toward the study, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Everybody know what we're talking about there? Okay, I'll, yeah, I just.
And I guess I, I don't know 100%, but this, this has nothing to do with the, what were we just talking about last minute?
Oh, the $50,000 grant.
It does.
Yeah, it does. It's something actually.
So it, it's actually not a 50,000, it, when, when it was presented to the board, it was, they thought it was going to be a $50,000 grant and $50,000 match. Saltville actually qualifies for an $80,000 grant and $20,000 match. They request, this library requested 15,000 from ARPA and committed to fundraising 5,000. So we're basically doing the 15,000 that they requested through ARPA, but we're going to do it basically through contingency funds. We, we have.
We on the committee felt that, on this board felt that that was something, we, our supplemental money, we, we put that money aside when we do the, we put money aside for when a project comes up or something comes up that has good need in the county. We don't have it anywhere else in the budget, we have some money. And we felt that that's money, that this was a good use for that money.
Well, cheaper than.
It's not cheaper than the 50,000, right.
I still agree with Phil though, that's, we know we want to do it, let's just use that 50,000 to build it, but you know, we gotta, we gotta do the I's and T's and, so we, we were funding the 15,000 they need, the library's going to come up with the other five and then the salt will, will have the rest of it.
I think the numbers take through me all the time.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, that is a good question, thanks for asking.
All righty, any other questions? Good question. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed likewise?
Great, and then the second motion I would like to make in the chamber's presentation, one important part that I think is a dire need in this county is for a childcare development program. So this would support efforts to open additional childcare facilities, which anybody with little ones knows that it's very, very, very hard to find childcare in this county. Um, so, part of that request from the chamber, I believe the amount was thirty thousand dollars. Um, so, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to, again, use funds from the supplemental appropriations in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the childcare development program requested through ARPA from the Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to use this, and from what I read, from what I heard, maybe I heard wrong, but this is more for the, the smaller. In other words, the school kicks in, when, when they're school age, we got some things working out there. This is not necessarily intended, but it will benefit them, I want to say, from six months to three years old, more than anybody, any other age group. And, uh, and that's where the need, there's a complete need across the spectrum, but this particular age group needs it the worst. And, uh, if we can do that, we can put more people back in the workforce, we can attract more young people, because all of a sudden, Smith County can help them with their children. And the school did a wonderful job, and we did a job working with the school for that after-school program, and this just enhances it that much more, so, uh, I'm tickled that we're, we, we can even think about it. So, we have a motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? And this is what the supplemental money's put in the budget for, for good projects like this, so. Alrighty, then that, that takes care of both of our amended, uh, agenda. We're up to, um, supplemental appropriation request by the Smith County Schools.
So, you have a letter in your packet, um, requesting an additional hundred, hundred thousand dollar appropriation for technology. Um, this is not additional budget, this is just, they need to spend money now, before, um, the end of the quarter, when we'll be doing the fourth quarter appropriations. Um, they understand that they're stiff, there's only gonna be a, a few thousand dollars left in the technology fund side. I will note that with a lot of their ESER money, which is their, um, CARES Act-type funds that they be, that is dedicated to schools, they'll be coming in, um, uh, next month with a budget amendment to incorporate some of that into their technology and their facilities. So, I would like to recommend that the hundred thousand dollar appropriation be approved. Supplemental appropriation.
I gotta be quiet, I need to say a word.
I've gotta be quiet online, so.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Widener.
And I'll second it.
And a second from Mr. Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? And we have one extension. I'm speaking for you, you did great. Alrighty. I've, have we, and if we blew right by it, I, I apologize. The second to last page of our agenda, the Smith County Board of Supervisors, is, uh, our USDA Rule Development Free Development Funding Grant.
That was part of the, um, the water sewer, um, the second recommendation.
Okay.
Yep, we're good.
Just wanna make sure we had approved that.
That's very important.
Alrighty, report from a county attorney. I know Scott's been busy.
Two forty-three, well run.
Uh, I have been busy, uh, I would just do a gentle reminder to turn on your microphones when you speak, so, Paul, I guess if she's recording minutes later, she won't, she'll be able to hear what we say. Um, the, I gave you a list today of a task list that I'm sure has not, does not have everything on it that I should be working on. If you know something that I should be working on, it's not on that list, uh, please let me know. Uh, I have already thought of a couple of things, uh, one at the water department with, uh, subpoena, request for deposition of an employee there that we delayed, uh, and I need to provide some information on that. There was another thing I thought of earlier and I forgot to write it down, so, I'm sure it'll come up again. If you have any questions, I'm happy to discuss with you.
What does SWN down at the bottom stand for?
SWN, Stormwater Management. So, those are projects that need some kind of formal stormwater management agreement. Most of the time, those come in with a request for permit to control the water runoff, and sometimes that's a detention pond, sometimes it's just berms or landscaping. And once that's put in, there's supposed to be an agreement recorded in the land records to maintain that. And then if it's not maintained, then the county can come in and fix it, uh, and put a lien on the land or some control, the repair of the, of the water runoff. And the owner of the property is supposed to bring us an agreement, uh, of how they're gonna maintain it forever, essentially. Um, and that's what that means, we're just trying to get those agreements. There's been permits issued, there's been construction, like Bojangles has been there for years, but they could never get the owner to give us an agreement. Um, I'm not sure what the management plan is there, um, there's no pond there, I don't think. Um, so, sometimes it's just keeping landscaping in place or a green space to make sure that, uh, there's a place for water to go.
Because we have to follow the rules of the Chesapeake Bay, we don't leave the water that flows into the Chesapeake Bay. It's super frustrating.
Do you try phoning? Okay, any, can say anything else from there?
I do not.
Alrighty, that was short and sweet. Report from the county administration staff.
I hope to be shorter and sweeter. Um, I just have one thing to report, um, last week, a couple of board members and I attended the Bayco Legislative Day, and, um, the, the biggest thing that I came back with, a lot of the concerns that we had on, um, the tax-related bills that were, would affect the county finances have been overturned, except for the grocery tax. I think that does have legs, and that somehow, some way, something is going to go through the General Assembly and be, uh, signed by the governor. We're hoping that, um, there are amendments out there that, that would, um, make the education side whole somehow, some way, whether it's, uh, an additional tax, or it's a, a payment directly from the, from the state. There's only one amendment that would protect the localities, if Bayco's working hard to educate more of, more, um, of the senators and delegates, um, on the true cost, uh, that, uh, that this, this could entail. Um, so, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we, we won't be hurt by, by, um, whatever bill goes through, but there's, we still are watching it closely.
Alrighty. Anybody got any other questions for our administrator? Okay. Supervisor comment time, I meant to put everybody's name in a hat and draw them out, and I forgot to tonight, so. Chris, you're on the end, I'll start with you this time.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a whole lot to say, um, other than just to, just to reiterate the thanks for the staff, for their hard work in assembling the packet, the information, and I'd like to thank Mr. Farthing for, um, his hard, hard work on the legal side of it there. It, it, it certainly helps to have the ability to say, can we legally do this? And get a affirmative, so, um, I want to commend the other board members for being able to take a hard stance on some of these issues today and cleaning up some of the concerns of the, of our citizens. So, with that, um, I will conclude my comments.
Mr. Sturgill? Just like to say, the best news I've seen in a while is the COVID numbers are starting on the decline now, and, uh, the school system, we're having a hard time staffing, and whether it's bus drivers or teachers, because we're having so many people, but, anyway, we're sta, we've stayed afloat, we've kept our head above water, and it's required a, a lot of extra effort on a lot of people's parts to keep us going. So, we're glad to see that, and I just thank the board members for working together and talking things out, and, and, uh, I'm looking forward to this year, where we go with it.
Alright, thank you, uh. I just thank everybody for being here tonight, you know, we had a couple of nuisance complaints that we had to handle, and I think we took a step forward by doing that, and thankfully, neither one was in my district, but, uh, I would not want to live where he, he, one of those locations. So, I, I just think that's a good move on our part.
You have churchmen driving.
Yeah, I got churchmen driving, but mine is not that, it's, it's personalities. Um, so, it's, 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 it is and it isn't, you know, I just, uh, I hope we get that straightened out over there and things go a little bit better, but I thank y'all for being willing to discuss things. We all don't get our way all the time, but I think we have made headways as a board, and I hope we can continue to make headway. And, uh, uh, you know, we've got budget time rolling around, so, I don't know if it's a proper, not a prayer force as we work on the budget. Because it's, it's not easy, uh, there's a lot of people needing money, and you know, sort of like these two special contingency funds we denied, there's a lot of good causes out there, you know, and how do you decide who you support and who you don't? You know, we gotta look at the number of people involved and who get, you know, a, and just a number of things, and, uh, and I will throw this out, maybe this is not the right place to say it, but it came to my thoughts tonight, him talking about this roads. We, we here, and I know, years ago, I was told from Richmond, that, uh, northern part of Virginia would like to, for the highway departments, for VDOT, become local issues. And I don't want that, because we can't ever afford to build our own roads, there's just no way. But maybe we need to start looking, at least, as, as we, and have good years and bad years, maybe we need a group, this board, to maybe start somehow designating, and I've, I use that word just because that's all that come to mind, maybe as we budget each year, put a little bit of money in the budget for discretionary road development. I don't know how else, in other words, uh, every now and then, a good issue comes before this board, where the county would be, benefit, not just one or two houses, but it'd be a road that connects two major roads or whatever, that state is not willing, VDOT is not willing to do, where if we build a fund, you know, all of a sudden, we need a mile built to connect two roads here in the county, we have a little fu, a little bit of money set aside for that, and I, I, you know, I was looking, well, maybe when this casino money starts becoming, and we maybe could say, hey, we want ten percent of that to each year be put back for road development. They are, I don't know, but I'm just thinking, you know, we can't afford to do it out of the revenue we have for all other sources, but, uh, that's just something, as we discuss budget, to be thinking about, because we can't afford to build, but we can try to help a little bit. Or be seeing money to put with something else. Once again, thank you everyone for your open discussions, and, uh, Lori.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins, just to follow up on a, a comment Mr. Atkins made, I want to reiterate everything he said, but I want to thank the ARPA committee, um, it's, everybody appointed somebody from their district that's really good, um, at listening and understanding the projects, and, uh, like Mr. Atkins said, we've got a lot of good organizations in this community wanting to do a lot of good things, and, uh, we have over fifteen million dollars in requests to the ARPA, ARPA committee, and we have five point nine million dollars, so, um, it's, it's gonna be hard to come through all those things, because every project that was submitted is a good one. Um, so, I just, I just want to express appreciation to, to them, and, um, the folks that showed up tonight to speak, um, at the public hearings, I appreciate them, and I appreciate everybody, um, standing firm on our vote to move forward to take care of these public nuisance, because I can sure tell you, I would not want to live next to either one of them. Uh, and I appreciate the staff and this board, and just hope everybody has a safe trip home tonight.
Our new member, Mr. Widener.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm glad to see, uh, things as far as these nuisance, and things moving forward. We hear a lot about that in, from our constituents and everything in our areas, so, a lot of times in the past, things just don't move quick enough, and, and, uh, to be part of this, and, and seeing things starting to move in the right direction, that, that makes me very happy, and I think makes the citizens very happy as well. Uh, I just want to say I enjoyed my trip to Richmond with, uh, the county administrator and Mr. Sturgill. Uh, I, I've learned a lot in, in the last month, probably a whole lot more than I ever planned on learning, so, and I know there's a lot more to go, so, um, that being said, I'm happy everybody has a safe trip home, and thank you very much.
Enjoyed the trip, it was a big trip, like I said, my plans would be to attend every year. Well, I, I, I agree, and I apologize for not being able to go this year. I, I usually go twice, I go with this organization, then I go with another organization, and I, I've talked a little bit to both, I've talked to Mr. Sutton about this, and I've talked to the other organization, and we're a farming community, and the other organization I go to Richmond with, it was when they have their, their day. Next year, if I'm still around on the line and everything, we're gonna try to coordinate it, find out what issues that they're wanting to highlight, and then they're gonna find out what issues we want to highlight, and we're gonna present the same thing twice. And, and I think that, you know, once, all of a sudden, they, you know, hey, this group is up here about, we had somebody up here about this just recently. The more it's put in front of them, the more active we are to get results. And so, they were, like I say, they were very gung-ho on that also, so, I, I just think, you know, take every chance you can get to talk, and, and I'm not talking about our legislators. A comment was made, none of y'all said this, but y'all, you didn't have to convince our legislators where we are, what we need, they knew. It's when you get a chance to talk to that legislator from Loudoun County that sort of understands rural America. You know, and persuade them, hey, we need help down here, those are the people you need to talk to in Richmond. And they can be a lot of help, they're that one vote we need to get over the hump to get something brought this way. So, uh, these, these trips are important. You know, when we have our agenda laid out, when we get there, you know, we're gonna talk to this guy or that woman, or whomever it is, it helps. So, I'm just saying, if you can go next year, try to get it on your jet and go. Okay, that's my public, that's my public, uh, report for the... And I guess we have a closed session now under the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session under Virginia Code Section two point two dash... Let me start over, I guess. Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session under Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one.
So, discuss, uh, the county attorney.
Attorney.
Yeah.
A one personnel matters discussion consideration interviews, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion salaries, disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion second, all those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.